I'll order the City of Columbia City Council meeting on this January 2nd, 2024. We will begin this evening by having our invocation by Deanne, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by our two student representatives, Darren Pettisini and Rebecca Clark.
Lord, bless those who hold office in the government of our city. Help them to do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. In your name we pray. Amen.
Before we do roll call, we're going to figure out who we're going to call on the roll. So, we're going to have at this time, our Organization of Counsel, the section, and Anthony DiTello, Clerk of Courts, will be swearing in Richard Skip Liston and Dan DiTilio. Ty Graham is ill this evening and will not be present. He'll have to be sworn in at a later date. Gentlemen, you want to go down?
Ty is online. I know you want to be here, Ty.
I state your name. You solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, Constitution of the State of Ohio, you solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the State of America, Constitution of the State of Ohio, the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Columbia. And the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Columbia. That I will not be influenced by any consideration except that that I will not be influenced by any consideration except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of merit or fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees. Of employees. I will not make or authorize the expenditure of public money otherwise for adequate consideration. Expenditure of public money otherwise than for adequate consideration. I was sorry for me to get out too.
Yeah, whatever.
Start it over.
I will not make or authorize I will not make or authorize the expenditure of public money expenditure of public money otherwise than otherwise than for adequate consideration for adequate consideration an efficient service an efficient service to municipal corporation municipal corporation that I will, in all other respects faithfully discharge the duties of my office. And that I will, in all other respects faithfully discharge the duties of my office. So sworn in. Easy for you to say.
All right, Doug. Well, we're great to have you two gentlemen stay with us, and we look forward to your contribution here at the council. At this time, we need to elect a President of Council. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I move to appoint Skip Liston as President of Council.
Second.
Motion second to appoint Skip Liston, better known as Richard Liston, the other way around, as President of Council. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask Deanne to call the roll on the motion.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Abstain.
Banner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Our President of Council, Skip Liston, again. And he was a great President of Council, so I'm going to assume that he's going to continue that role. Thank you, Skip. At this time, I'm going to again adjust the agenda and seek a motion to concur with City Manager Lance Willard and Chief of Police William Myers to hire Caitlin Doole as a full-time police officer for the Columbia Police Department. Roll call. No. Oh, I'm sorry. I have been instructed by my associates that we should call the roll.
Yengus?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
DiTilio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Okay, now that I've been corrected, I stand corrected, and now I will move to concur with City Managers. I'll look for a motion to concur with City Manager Lance Willard and Chief of Police William Myers to hire Caitlin Doole as a full-time police officer with the Columbia Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Deanne, we call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Very good. The folks want to come forward for the swearing in? And did I pronounce it correctly? Doole? Very good. I'm glad I did.
Caitlin, I have some questions. Deanne, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Caitlin Doole.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
And the charters and ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As full-time officer?
As full-time officer.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you want to get a picture with your family? That if, um, yeah, why don't we get a quick picture? There's a great picture. Thank you, folks. Thank you very much. Received electronically the minutes of our meeting of December 19th, 2023. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve? Uh, excuse me. The minutes will be adopted as submitted. At this time, we will have a reading of communications, and we have a proclamation for Richard McBane, who, at our last meeting, was his last meeting with us and served the city. And I'd like to take this opportunity to present this proclamation. I'm going to come down front. Proclamation, whereas Richard McBane has faithfully served as a planning commission member from 2008 until his appointment to City Council, a council member in 2019, and serving until the end of his term on December 31st, 2023. Whereas Richard has been notably involved in the progressive decisions to the City of Columbia and its citizens. And whereas he has always exhibited true dedication and distinction to the planning growth of a constantly evolving and expanding community, and since this passion for his four-legged friends is unmatched, he was the principal contributor and supporter of the Harvey S. Firestone Dog Park. Whereas he has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact, and his affection of his fellow public service, and whereas he has been a civic-minded citizen taking interest in supporting other events of the community. This included his active support and participation in local theater production, both as an actor and a stagecoachist. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Columbia, hereby proclaim our appreciation to Richard McBane and to further express our friendship and good wishes to Richard for his years of dedicated service to the city and its citizens dated the 2nd day of January, 2024. Congratulations. Anything?
I've enjoyed being on council over the years. Also enjoyed my time on planning commission prior to that. And I really think that we have terrific membership on council right now. It's very, very nice to see it moving forward. And I'll probably still be involved in some things. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Derek. Everybody here at the last meeting said a lot of nice things about you, so we don't want to embarrass you anymore. Moving to our reports of Commissions and Board, the Park and Recreation and Cemetery Board meeting minutes of November 27th, 2023 was in your packets, as well as the CRA Housing Committee meeting minutes of December 19th, 2023. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Okay, they'll be accepted as submitted. At this time, we're going to move to the Managers' Report. I'm going to turn it over to Lance Willard, our City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. Okay, since the last meeting, we've been talking about our new building department recommending to have a registration process for contractors working in the community. Should have that ready for next meeting, so you'll have that in time for your next packet. Also, we were working on getting some help in the City Managers' Department. That's going to create, take a creation of a department or a position, and we've been waiting on that, and we think we've got that ready for next meeting, too. Mark and I have been working on an issue on a non-conforming sign that was erected on Main Street, and that issue is being handled. So, definitely, you know, it's been nice to be a part of Columbia. And we're very appreciative that people actually care about their community, and we're concerned, too. And we've spent some hours on that, and we will continue to do that until we see that it's taken care of. We took the two new council members on a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant. It was nice to go out there and see the plants. The wastewater plant was opened in 2005. The water plant was open in 2018, and the wastewater plant looks like it was opened in 2022. I mean, it is, it just looks so, so good. It's, they take really good care of it, and it's a fun tour to take anybody to that because you can see that the pride of both employees of the wastewater plant and the water plant, and really throughout the city, they take really good care of their equipment. We have a 2004 truck down there at the wastewater plant that looks, it looks brand new. So, it's like a $350,000 truck, and they've taken really good care of it, so. Mark was contacted by the county regarding the new 911 committee. You've seen some articles in the paper about that. They're asking if we have a council member who would want to toss their name in for the municipality representative on the newly organized 911 committee. So we can talk about that after I get done with my meeting, if you'd like, or my report. And then we'll give that name to Mark, and he will, in turn, give it to them. Did meet with the Stadium Committee, portions of it, Pat Tingle, Sean Zetner, let's see, Summer Story was there, and also the Jim Sabatini, who is working on the Bleacher Project, Stadium Project. And I brought a few superintendents to the meeting, and we were just trying to figure out how the city can help either in the destruction or demolition or the construction process of that. So, we're working through that. We're going to work right with Jim Sabatini to do that, so. There are some housekeeping things that we're doing tonight on ordinances that we placed on the agenda. One is to adopt the minimum wage increase that was a change of January 1st. The others are changing non-union wage ordinance to document the recent changes in our vision coverage and uniform reimbursement policy. So, those are some things that we just need to get done, so I did put those on the agenda. Street Department, they did finish the leaf collection. It was a very successful season. Didn't get a lot of rain to slow things up, so. Out at the water plant, for those of you who toured that, took that tour, the, that one tank that was empty, they're redoing that lime feed system where they take the dry lime, put it in water. It was getting clogged up, so they're redoing that side now, and they've already done the other side, I believe, so. Wastewater Department, they've wasted sludge, press sludge, and did some maintenance on the aeration drives for the oxidation ditch. Park and Cemetery, they're continuing to digitize the cemetery records, and they were able to start taking down the Joy Christmas. I know that we'll probably get a report from tourism how well the, you know, the season went for them, but from what I could see, it was really successful. And it's kind of fun working that because you get to see, I worked there for, I think it was three hours one night, and only knew two people that came through the doors. And there was a lot of people, so. A lot of people getting to experience Columbia from outside. Electric Department, they're going over the substation breaker upgrades that we have coming up. They're also planning for the Route 46 line extension to feed that project at Lakefront. They're continuing to outfit the new truck, and they've been ordering new materials for stock. And I believe that is everything I have. Just wanted to remind everybody the new 911 committee, if you want to have that conversation. Anybody's interested in that.
So, we're looking for an appointment to that committee on council. Any comments?
The makeup of that committee, although there might have been a 911 committee, it's now being reorganized. This is pursuant to change in state statutes, so the whole committee had to be reorganized. There will be a representative from all of the municipalities. So right now, what the organizers would be asking for are names to be thrown in for the other municipalities to then vote on. The township representative has already been selected. The commissioners have a representative they've selected. So there are a number of representatives for this committee already, you know, already in place. The committee will then have to meet, and that is probably going to take place by March. And that committee will then have to adopt or re-adopt certain, you know, rules, regulations, and there have been changes that will have to take place also.
President of Council.
You draw the strokes wrong.
I certainly don't hear anybody talking here.
Nor do I.
Same thing. If no one else is interested, I'll throw my name in the hat, but, you know, the timing is difficult for me, but I'm sure I can make time for meetings occasionally if I am ultimately selected.
I don't, you know, I can't sit here and say, well, here's how many times they're going to meet. I'm sure it's one of these statutory, like, it has to meet so many times, but they've already talked about. I think it might be difficult to get everybody together, so I think what they're going to try to do is probably make the meetings as convenient for all as possible.
I'd be willing to throw my name in the hat if possible.
And pies fellas tell ya. Okay, very well. We
Chief, do you have thoughts or?
So, I want to proceed. Well, we've got the, we've got the two representatives. They're going to get their names tossed in a hat, and we have to wait, I think, until somebody's picked.
I don't know that there's anything that says we can't throw two names in the hat. Lance, from my, and you were present at the meetings, too. It seems pretty informal at this point. They're just trying to come up with names for other city councils basically to vote on.
Well, if Ty's interested in doing it, I'm more than happy to step back. I just wanted, I didn't want Columbia to not at least have the opportunity to have representatives, so. If Ty's interested, I'm more than happy to step back.
Wonderful. One name. That takes care of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ty.
Thank you, Ty.
Thanks, Ty.
Good job not to be here. Okay, that's good. I think that's that's all we need to do with that at this time. Okay, if there's no other information from the Managers' Report, I'd like to move to a review and comment on the bill list of January 2nd, 2024. All received. Is there any questions or comments on the bill list? Be accepted as submitted. We have no old business on the agenda this evening, but I'm going to move to new business, and I would entertain a motion to read all ordinances by title only.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Deanne, you call the roll?
DiTilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number 24-0-3207, first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number 23-0-3159, establishing a wage schedule for certain full-time and part-time employees of the City of Columbia.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Deanne, you call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-3208, first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number 23-0-3160, setting a salary and establishing a position and other conditions of employment for the City Manager of the City of Columbia.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Deanne, you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-3209, first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number 23-0-3161, setting a salary and establishing a position and other conditions of employment for the Chief of Police of the City of Columbia.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Deanne, you call the roll?
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-3210, first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number 23-0-3162, setting salaries and establishing positions and other conditions of employment for certain appointed personnel of the City of Columbia.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Questions, comments? Deanne, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-3211, first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number 23-0-3158, establishing rates of pay for part-time employees of Firestone Pool for the City of Columbia.
So moved.
Second.
Deanne, you call the roll?
DiTilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
I have a motion to concur with the CRA Housing Committee, who voted unanimously to continue each of the residential CRAs from 2019 through 2022.
So moved. Second.
Second. Any comments on that? Hearing none? Deanne, you call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Okay, those are all of the items of new business. At this point in the agenda, I would, we'd like to take the time, if anyone out there has any public comments that they would like to make. At this point in the agenda, I would like to take the time, if anyone out there has any public comments that they would like to make, comments from you folks. Okay, hearing none. So now we'll turn up here, if there are any council comments.
I do. Unfortunately, I had to miss the last meeting of December, and I just wanted to thank you, Dick, for your service to the city. It's been a pleasure serving with you on council and also sharing the stage with you in the past, and wish all the best, and we're going to miss you.
I'd like to present an idea to council. As you've seen in the paper for the last at least three weeks, these different villages and towns around here have been swearing people in as they went, and we waited till tonight to do it. I'd like council to consider or to think about the possibility of swearing in the last council meeting of December rather than the first of January. One of the things that caught me was if you get into a situation where President of Council and the mayor are both getting sworn in, now you can't have mayors for it because they get sworn in after. Now, we can, we can accomplish that by moving things around and maybe calling a special meeting, but I, I just don't see a reason to do that. If we sworn a little bit early, we could float right into the new year with everybody in place. I'd just like you to think about it, and, you know, we can talk about it. I don't, I think that's not a bad idea. I'm just wondering how the charter, because the charter brings, for council members, says our term expires on December thirty first, right?
Right.
So we wouldn't actually technically have a vacancy.
Until December thirty first. That, I'll look at that, but the first thing I'm thinking of is the reason for January is because your term expires December thirty first. So we'd be in effect swearing someone in before someone else's term expired. And that could create.
Could they be sworn in effective one January?
That's precisely what I want to look at and see if we can do that.
My other thought is, because it kind of came up with John's appointment as well. Do, we don't have to swear people in during a meeting.
No.
There's no requirement of that, so.
No.
If we were in that kind of situation, the mayor could be sworn in before the meeting with no trouble. So that would be an option as well. I, I mean, we do this for the ceremony of it, which is, which is great. But I think that we have options if, if we needed to do something out of necessity. Oh, we certainly do. I mean, we can call a special meeting or anything else, but just for simplicity's sake, just so that everything runs smoothly, and we don't have to jump through hoops to get that done on occasion. That's why I was bringing that up. Yeah. Like I said, I think the biggest issue there would be the term expiring, because the terms don't expire until December thirty first. So that could be an issue, but that's what we have lawyers for, so.
Yep.
Okay, I'll check on that. Any other comments? Well, I have two quick things, real quickly. You know, we are in Columbiana County, and this last year, we started having mayor's meetings where the mayors in the county, Monica Blaisdell, started setting up meetings where we meet. And we think it's, we've very, we have always been very interested in seeing all of our communities in Columbiana County grow and prosper and make improvements. I think this is a great place to live, whether you choose Columbiana or Leitonia or Salem or what have you. We're all good communities. We have a lot of good, a lot of things we can offer to people. I think our relationship with Salem this last year was really great when we set up the county building depart, or the city, Salem and Columbiana Building Department. I think it's a tremendously progressive and good thing to happen for our, for our two communities, and we hope to continue to do development projects with the other communities here. And it was in the paper, and Skip and I had an opportunity to go down to East Liverpool and talk about charter former government about a month ago. And the city of East Liverpool, you know, got this Thompson Building downtown, and they put together a financial package in order to save this historic building. And I know it was a major project of Mayor Greg Bricker, who is now, you know, they, he didn't, he didn't run for office anymore, but I knew he put a lot of time into it. And I think it's a fantastic example of using local and state, state and city money and resources and people to save this historic building. And I think we should, you know, really recognize our, the communities we have in Columbiana County. And so I think we should recognize and, you know, the work that they did in East Liverpool. We wish them the best. So it's just a comment I'd like to make. The other question I have is, there has been some discussion here about having somebody from council attend school board meetings as we continue to work, you know, with the school board. And there has been some discussion that possibly we could have a representative here that could attend the school board meeting, so we're aware of what the school board is doing. Of course, they're always welcome to come here and hear what we're doing. And so I know that has been discussed, and I wondered if any of you wanted to speak on that matter. Any comments?
I can see a lot of positives to that. It will, it will give us an eye into what they're, what they're talking about, what they're talking about doing, how they're approaching it. Specifically, I'm thinking about where, where we come together on the craig. We may even be able to chime in and give them some data that they're talking about, maybe data they don't have, and fill that gap for them. I think it's probably a pretty good idea.
I would do that. Is it just part of the public attendance, or you mean like, you know, specifically being there representing?
Well, with everybody else, I'm thinking just.
I mean, they could walk in here anytime they want, right? So.
I think that's probably the same thing we want to do. If we tried to force a member onto the school board, I'm not sure that they would like that. Yeah, I think, I think maybe one of the outcomes of this joint meeting that we proposed would be formalizing a liaison type situation.
Yeah.
But for the time being, as you point out, there's no reason why up to three members of council can't attend a school board meeting. It's, you know, we're, we're all citizens of the school district. So we could all, you know, very easily attend a meeting just as a member of the public, whether they recognized us as, as council members or not. So I think it's a great idea. I think, but I do hope when we do this joint meeting, one of the outcomes I'd like to see would be a liaison, a formal liaison. And for me, I would, I would recommend not somebody who has a previous relationship on either side. So I wouldn't want to do it. I think Skip and Ted, probably because we've, we've been, you know, going back and forth to school board for a number of years now, would be less than ideal choices. And the same, I would think that Scott and, and Scott and Kelly would be not the first choices, although if they elected to send Scott and Kelly, we, Scott or Kelly, we couldn't stop them, and we wouldn't want to. There's no reason to, but I think just not someone without that previous relationship might have a more open mind, which is, you know, John, I think he'd be a great choice. And I, I mean, it doesn't have to be one person either. It could be, it could be more than one. Like I said, we can do up to three and not have an open meeting problem. I think one of the problems you run into, though, is if, if you want, is if three are going to go, now you start looking like we're ganging up on them. We have one good representative that goes. Well, I, I wouldn't recommend three. I would say one or maybe two to make sure we've got somebody at all of their meetings, just so that we can, you know, be a proper, you know, sounding board or, or if, you know, ask questions, answer questions, that sort of thing. I, Mark, you looking, you're going to say something?
Yeah, all I was going to say was their organizational meeting is next Tuesday, which will then determine what day, you know, of the week, and they're going to meet each month. And I was trying to remember, it's been the second Tuesday for a number of years, so. But they could change that just so that you know.
What time they're meeting, six? They've been meeting at six. John, is that something you see?
Yeah, I would be interested in that. We work with them, our family, you know, we're in there, and my wife's working in there, and.
Okay. And again, it's just somebody to be there. Maybe there's a question that comes up about city, and so we have a resource person there. Do we need to vote on that, or how does everybody feel? No, I don't think so.
He's not, no, he's not going as a formal representative of the city. He's going as a private citizen.
Well, yes, but he's also recognized as a city, you know, with city council.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we're not sending him in that capacity, so. Not in my voting.
Okay, so it's just the ten.
Yeah, I can make that.
Thanks, John.
Are there any other comments?
Is August handling the contractor registration? Is it kind of going through here?
And Mark, I mean, Mark, Mark's designing the process right now. And then, and then it will come in to our, our zoning department.
Okay. I might be able to help if you need a little help. I could handle that in Lisbon when I was down there, so. The contractor registration.
Yeah, I'll be happy to get with him, show you exactly what we have so far. No problem, thanks.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? Well, good news, folks. If there's nothing else, I would for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Anybody that want to adjourn?